Thank you.
Welcome. We are so glad you're here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Sure.
Shoemaker?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Pullen?
Here.
Hofstadter?
Here.
Khan?
Here.
Kellogg?
Here.
Okay, our community calendar, tomorrow night is Once Upon a Craft Night for kindergarten through 5th grade at the library. I know that we are almost to tomorrow, but if you want to take your kid to that, please register with the library. This Saturday, July 19th, is Clue at the Mansions Summer Edition. And so it's people from around the world who were in public office, or kings or queens, or people like that, when the Victorian house was built. So that will be fun. The other thing I wanted to mention was August 2nd is the Back to School Bash from 10:00 a.m. to noon at Love Inc., the Love Center Food Pantry. It's $5 per child, and you can get everything that they need, all of their school supplies, and there are other things available at that as well. This is going to be our last bicentennial celebration update. I wanted to show you all, the banners are here, and this is what they look like. They're all different colors, greens, oranges, yellows, blues. And so the street department, when they have time, will be getting these up in the downtown.
Very nice.
I think they look really, really nice. I think the kids are gonna get really excited to see their names and their drawings in the downtown, so that'll be fun.
How many of those are there?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Eighteen of them, mhm. So that was the last of our bicentennial celebration update. I do have a proclamation here for Millersburg from Mark Heiner. I'll go ahead and read that. "A resolution from Representative Heiner honoring the village of Millersburg on its bicentennial. Whereas the members of the House of Representatives of the 136 General Assembly of Ohio are pleased to recognize the village of Millersburg on the jubilant occasion of its 200th anniversary. And whereas this is indeed an auspicious milestone and celebration is certainly in order. Since its inception 200 years ago, the village of Millersburg has experienced dramatic growth and change, and yet commendably, even as its residents have exuberantly embraced the promise of a bright future, they have never relinquished their appreciation for the worthiest virtues of the past. Without sacrificing their sense of tradition in the name of progress, the people of Millersburg have managed to nurture a fresh perspective and a positive outlook that endear this distinctive place to all who know it well. And whereas two centuries after it was founded, the village of Millersburg still radiates vitality, optimism, and a charm all its own. Clearly, it is a place of many engaging qualities, and its schools, businesses, and civic organizations both embody and thrive upon the values of which our flag is an emblem. A vigorous commitment to public service and an earnest devotion to lofty ideals have long been second nature to many of Millersburg's residents, and vigilance, industriousness, and generosity have come to typify their collective character. And whereas every state depends upon such vibrant durable communities as Millersburg for its own survival and stability, although it is known adversity and tribulation, the village has also been favored with its share of blessings. In the years to come, Millersburg is sure to remain on its admirable course and to continue to transform challenges into opportunities. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the House of Representatives of the 136 General Assembly of Ohio, in adopting this resolution, extend our congratulations to the village of Millersburg on the observance of its bicentennial and offer our best wishes for its perennial good fortune." So we will get that hung up here. Okay, are there any visitors that wish to address council at this time? Hearing none, I will add...
I will?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Commissioner?
Good evening. I'm Holmes County Commission Dave Hall, and here just more of just updates and just listening to you as we've been partnering through last year on programs and from the, when I was in here last, we were talking about the health building, how the health building has been built, and I appreciate the partnership we have at the sidewalks, and also working partnership with the Benham Memorial down there, and another thing, the Appalachia Grant, and a bunch of other things. I'm basically here just my appreciation to all of you who we've been working with through the past year, year and a half. I said I'd come back, and I'm more of a listener. I think I've talked to most of you on the street or somewhere. You made a call. I just want to be accessible and just, if you have any questions, I appreciate it. If you don't, you always call me. I think you all have a phone number. Do you have any questions? What are you gonna use?
Thank you, yeah.
Anyway, thank you all again, and thanks for the bicentennial and the partnership we have had, and look forward to many others. I was just in Kilbuck a little while ago with their grant, and I know that it's constantly going after those dollars. It can be a struggle, so it takes all of us to get a team. It was fun, so thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, Pullen, thank you, Ed.
Okay.
I met with Mark Leinenner and Arnie Oliver.
Yes, sir.
And we're discussing industrial spots and what we can do. I want to thank the department for that.
Good. Those are the things you're looking at. I think we're trying to figure out, I think my 20-year vision when I spoke to the bicentennial, video talked about, you know, what we need to do in our villages and the opportunity to, because of the infrastructure, to tap into the growth of, or existing, infrastructure. We have, you know, we have, we all know the elementary school, maybe 26th, they'll be moving. And I know there's a lot of chatter in all the elementary schools. I was like, go out in the communities, and everyone has ideas and vision, and those are the things we have to plug in and be able to do as a team. I know that we set some money aside for Mark and Arnie for potential acquisition of property. I mean, we reached out to the village at one time, and that fell through, but we still have fun sitting in that account. Thank you for the comment. Anything else? Time to get a shot at me. Well, then I'll see you next year, but I'll be here anytime you call me.
Thank you so much. We always appreciate your partnership with us, Dave. Thank you. Any other visitors wish to address council at this time? All right, hearing none, I will ask for a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes.
Second.
Pullen?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Aye.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Aye.
All right, bill resolution 2025-15. Are there any questions on the bills totaling $302,651.38? Hearing none, can we have a motion to pay the bills?
Make a motion, Khan.
I'll second.
Khan?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Okay, Nate?
All right, there was no July meetings for the Design Review Board or Planning and Zoning Commission. Good news that the Worcester Road-Jones Street intersection, the pole is gone. Figured it out finally, thanks to Brightspeed. He gave me a little clue how to identify cables. But we learned something that day. So figured out it was Everstream. I'd never even heard of Everstream. They were the last cable on that pole. Contacted them, and within two, three days, they were out, and then removed their line. Brightspeed was in last week, I believe it was, and...
Is Everstream an ISP?
Yeah, yeah, they're a fiber, yeah. Cleveland, out of Cleveland.
Okay.
Very, very responsive, very quick to get their work done. Really appreciated that. So yeah, Brightspeed's done. They removed the pole. Talked to Melway. They're obviously in their prime haymaking season, so... Andrew said they'll try to fit us into their schedule if they can. If not, it'll be in the fall when they get slowed down, which is okay. We delayed it way too long with the pole issue, so it'll get done.
Is there gonna be an island there?
No.
Is that, it's just...
No, it'll be off-line. Our rail will be removed. The markings that are there will be removed and redone. So it'll be a traditional intersection, just painted, turn lanes coming out.
Okay.
So you have a left and straight lane, a right lane, and then your incoming traffic lane.
Okay.
With the center line. The sidewalks are all virtually done. The only one that remains is Park Bank. That's being coordinated. They want to do their parking lot. So their sidewalk, the sidewalking approach at that location will be done at the same time as their parking lot. Post office, I'm sure you've seen, is underway. The plan wants to pour today, but obviously got rained out. They planned it to pour tomorrow. Once that's done, we can come in and set up the crosswalk signals once the concrete's cured, get those going, so that'll wrap up those projects. We got an email last week that the ranger came in, the end of last week, so we're picking that up Thursday. That'll be done. I don't have a real good update on the playground equipment at Airport Park. I don't know. Did you get any notification when we got the bill for that? As far as a ship date or anything for the...
I didn't see anything.
So I assume because we got billed for it, it should be soon, I'm hoping?
There may have been a lead time on it now, but I think about it, but I don't recall what it was.
Okay. The guys did get the trail access done. If you've been down, see that. It turned out really well. Thanks to them for doing that. The Holmes County Hazard, or Holmes County EMA is hosting a hazard mitigation work session. You should have all got a copy of the flyer. If you're interested, you can pick one of the times on that date, and please RSVP for that. If you want me to sign you up, I can do that. Just let me know. The street department also got the new entrance signs up in the last few weeks. I assume everybody's seen those. I think they're really nice. We'll get the event signs underneath. We're working with HDM to see if they want to update those as well, get a different, newer signs up on those. Those will be coming back. Personnel-wise, Troy Snyder is completing his 12-month probation July 29th. Chad here will be completing his on August 5th, since we don't meet again before then. Asking that we remove them from probation either on those dates or now, whatever you're comfortable with. It's a couple of weeks, and they're both doing great. No issues. Recommend doing that.
I'll make motion to approve.
I'll second.
Approved now or on their date?
Now.
Now? Okay.
I'll second that, Khan.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
And Kellogg?
Aye.
And then the only other thing I do have for executive session to discuss hiring at the street department. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Chief?
Everybody should have got my quarterly report updated when I was in the packets. And then the only other things, I have a couple of things personalized for executive session.
Okay, thank you. Bobby?
Okay, June. What month is this? June financials. You guys acknowledged those, so thanks for that. I'm still doing a little work on the budget, and I know that it was discussed or somewhere in here, we talked about having kind of a yearly budget and finance meeting, audit and finance meeting. So hopefully by then, I kind of had a date in mind, but by then, I'm hoping too, we have our full audit report back. Everything looks great so far. I just haven't gotten the official audit report back. So we can kind of kill two birds with one stone at that meeting, go over what we have budget-wise, and also take a look at the official audit report. So that date, what was that date? I gotta look through all my notes here and find it.
August 11th?
August 11th, at 6:45. So wouldn't take real long. We can probably do that just a little before the regular session, council meeting, so...
I'll be here. It's all right.
Okay.
That is Brent, Bob, Andrea, Nate, Bobby, department heads, and Nate. Does that date work for you, Bob?
What's that?
August 11th at 6:45.
Aye.
Brent?
Yep.
Yep. Andrea, is that good? Okay. All right, we'll set it for them then.
Okay. That's all I have. All right, thank you. Bob?
You saw on my bill and also on the agenda, there's an easement that we need to pursue. It's on the 241 water tank. We've had access to that tank for years, forever. It's now being sold to another purchaser, and it's time to formalize that agreement because it was just a handshake with Sam's timing before now. So it's felt that we really need to put it in writing, so the easement is prepared. It's ready for Kelly to sign, and we need a motion to authorize Kelly to sign that easement agreement so that we can officially have access to the 241 policy, or 241 ballot. So that's number one. So I don't know if you want to do that now or if you want to...
I'll make that a motion.
Okay. That was Pullen second, right? Okay. Vaughn?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Aye.
A couple of other things. Dora is getting finalized at Dr. Taylor today. She said that she hopes that by the end of this month that it'll be in business, although that seemed to be a little bit rushing it. But anyway, it's coming to a close. I think you saw that there's an annexation that's pending, so I've been working on that. And so you'll see some activity on that in the future here. There's certain procedures we have to go through to finalize that. One part of the legislation tonight is advisory election on the marijuana issues, and we need to do that on an emergency basis. So hopefully, all of you will vote for that to be on the ballot on an emergency basis. And that's all I've got. If anybody has any questions about my bill, I'm glad to answer it now or after the meeting, so... I just, I did want to mention that when I put time down for a telephone call, that I'm not guessing about that. That's exactly off of my phone records. The exact amount of time is off of my phone records, so, okay, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, we've got our Records Commission Committee meeting. That's the only one I know. Are there any other upcoming meetings that you guys know about? No? Okay. Committee reports. Tom?
The minutes are included in the packet. The council rules are also included in the packet. I guess my suggestion is, is to give, since it's a little bit of short notice, give a little bit more time for everybody to look at them. If anybody has any questions or concerns, they could contact me. I'll make, I'll make a list of anything that anybody has, and then we can discuss it point by point at the next council meeting. If that works for everybody.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I would suggest that when we vote on the new rules, the changes that we've made, that each thing we've changed is voted on singly. I don't think we just vote for all the rule change. I want to go through each rule that was changed. I still don't even remember everything we changed, to be honest with you, because I was out that way.
I think we're voting on a packet. These are our rules. Anything...
But there's each rule that got changed.
But anything before is out the window. These are the new rules as a whole. I mean, I don't...
I had no say anyway. Like I said, I came to the meeting of it, and I didn't even get to see... Bob and I sat at that meeting, we were completely in the dark. And everybody had the, what was in front of them, and read and everything, and him and I didn't even know what anybody was talking about. In fact, I've got a thing of it that I can go through, but I really, I'm not trying to be difficult. I really feel like it was not transparent, and I don't know what was going on.
I mean, all you had to do is...
I'll call you. That's fine, but there were still things I didn't agree with, so I made vote no in the end. There were still things that I didn't agree with, because were we gonna put at the end of it a higher revised code?
I think that was the consensus, was to reference, put references in the rules, and then we could provide the sections as...
With an appendix.
There's gonna be an appendix?
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
Well, if I've got questions, I'll call you, but I still didn't like how the whole process was, but I was out.
So there will be additional appendixes? I don't know if I realized that.
It'll just be listing that the sections are all...
Okay, the whole text of that, or...
I think it should be the whole text. That's the kind of things I'm talking about. Just calling you later. I mean, I feel like these are things that should be...
I just worry that those things are from time to time amended or changed.
Well, when they amend them, then they can be changed, but it's still not...
Or we can just simply list them out, and then if there's an issue, there's plenty of resources to look at what the revised code is currently, and look at it that way rather than trying to keep up with...
Yeah, I was just thinking this, Andrea. Like, when I do research revised code, I never looked at, look at anything printed. And the reason for that is, is because if I happen to pull one out that's printed, and it's an older version, I want to go straight to the source. I get online, I put it in, and read the most up-to-date text. That's my, that was my only thought.
And I understand that. My issue was, and I'm beating a dead horse here, was the executive session and to define confidential matters, and the higher revised code does that. And I want that, that's not gonna change. That could be in the back of, that's not gonna ever change. So confidential matters are defined by, you know, my concerns where you just go in and discuss confidential matters have to do with certain things. And that I want to be clear in our village rules.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So that I want...
And we can add that. I mean, that's one of the things if you want to let it go and...
Protect all of us and everybody, yes.
Okay, that sounds good. So if anyone has any questions, concerns, additions, corrections, talk to Tom. That's great. Any other commit reports, committee reports? All right, we'll jump into this legislation. We have ordinance 2025-103 by title only. Third reading, pass or table, which we'll vote on that in a minute, and ordinance amending the zoning map zone territory of the village of Millersburg. So first, is there anyone that wants to speak on this, not speak on this? We can vote, or we can table. So I need a motion either way.
I'd like the motion to go ahead and vote.
Go ahead and vote. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Shoemaker?
No.
Vaughn? This is just to vote on it?
Yeah.
That we're going to vote?
Yes.
This is whether we vote now or we're gonna send it back to committee. That's what this vote is for.
Whether we're gonna vote for what the special use...
We're gonna, yes, we're gonna either vote now or send it back, and Bob said vote now, Tom seconded it, and now that's what this is for, to vote right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're gonna start all over. Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Pullen? Hofstadter?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
And Kellogg?
Aye.
Okay, so as this is the third reading, do we have a motion, one way or another?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and vote.
Okay.
I vote no.
Well, we need a second.
Okay.
So, Tom?
Let's clarify that.
Okay, I need to make sure that we're doing this.
Yeah, we just need to...
So we just need to vote now that we've voted to vote. We just need to vote.
We need to vote.
Now it's discussion. Yeah, now it's a yes or no vote. Yes, it's a motion to pass.
A motion to pass.
Yes.
Okay.
So you can approve it, approve it with modifications, conditions, whatever, or deny it?
Do you have things you want to say?
Well, I know that the last time that this was addressed, that there was concern about access. You know, has that been cleared up? That's what I talked about at the last meeting about there's easements recorded around those lots. We vacated all those alleys way back whenever that was. I can't remember the year now. And part of that was leaving access easements in place for those lots, all those, not just these lots, but all the lots in that whole entire section of town. So they've all got access.
And it is, they are access easements. They're not just for the village, correct?
They're access easements. If not, we would have landlocked a whole section of town. We can't do that.
So to make it clear, it's not landlocked.
It's not.
Yep, come on up. Yep, come on up.
Hello, everyone. I'm Olivia Biltz. I live at 1070 Worcester Road in Millersburg here in town.
I have a little...
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so I think you guys are familiar with me and my husband now. This is the fourth time that we've came. We live at 1070 Worcester Road, which is within, I think it's 250 feet of the area. I printed off and just wanted to show you guys, and I highlighted some areas. This is what I talked about at the first meeting, but that was a couple of months ago, so I just kind of wanted to reiterate a couple of things. First off, the entire purpose of your guys' zoning code is to protect the public health, safety, comfort, prosperity, and general welfare of the residents of Millersburg by protecting the property rights of all individuals, by assuring compatibility of uses and practices within districts. I am a believer that by approving this special use district and changing it to a special use district, it is not going to assure the, or assure the compatibility of uses and practices within the district because it's right smack in the middle of a single-family residential district. I know there are some duplexes down the street. Those were built in like 1970, I think, long before the zoning code was enacted. And quite frankly, we're concerned about the fact that if this gets approved as special use, A, in our neighbor's backyard, the Gildos Burgers, which butts upright against us, that's a single-family residence, that's gonna have a triplex right in its backyard. And B, what happens in the future, like 40, 50, you know, however long, many years down the road. My husband and I would love to live here for as long as possible. We love living in the village. And what we're afraid of happening is, now that you're gonna allow one special use district, then this house sells, and that gets changed to a special use, and then this one sells, and that gets changed to a special. And it's, I mean, we obviously can't predict the future, but I would like to prevent that as much from happening as possible. And also within 1102, or 11102, Section D says that we need to protect the character of the existing areas. We're clearly in a single-family residential district, so I would please ask that you protect the character of our neighborhood. Going down to 1137.09 is the criteria, criteria that council must consider. One of them is access, of course, but also with that is traffic flow and the provision of public services in the general area. But the two other things to consider... But the two other things to consider in addition to this, so this is not the traffic and, you know, access is not the end-all-be-all, is again, the compatibility with the zoning and use of adjacent land, it borders up against a single-family residential area, and the third is, you know, again, how it's going to affect the public health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of the village. There are plenty of people that have came multiple times, saying that this is not, you know, we're, we're village residents, we really don't want this to happen, so, that's all, I just hope you guys consider that, so, thank you. Does anybody have any questions on anything to, I can stand up here for a second? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Olivia. Yep. Please state your name and address for us.
Hi, everyone, I'm James with JDN Rangels, what you're talking about there and stuff. Yeah, I appreciate your concern, and I see where you're coming from. And so going back to where I bought, it's probably on 440 Martin Street, that was one of my questions, was, you know, I have access coming in from the bottom, and that's how I bought it, they said yes to you, and that, they did a title search and deed search. So I bought it, and then, time went on, and I had a plan of putting a duplex in, and then went to a triplex. So, me and Tris, we met, that's our neighborhood, we had a run-in, sorry, we got off the wrong foot, anyway. So I got somebody to cut the trees down, so I spent like seven grand, because I thought we were allowed to do this. Because it was, it's, if you look on the map, you got 60 feet of right-of-way going in there, and there's neighbors living in the back that use it as well. And they go, they go over across my property as well, if, if, whatever, but, so, I'm, I'm to the point of carry on, carry on, and, and Millersburg, the way I see it, needs, needs housing, I've got a couple of rentals in Millersburg, and I put a rent sign out, and immediately people are calling in, and, and I even have some, some of them raising their rent, like going against each other, raising their rent. So at this time, where I'm at now is, I don't want to cause any trouble, so if this is gonna be a big issue, and I talked to Tris about it too, if, if, if I'm gonna fight all through the bill, and, and, you know, if I get on her grass a little bit, and then, then I really don't want to do it, and, and are you, Jason?
Yeah.
With TechCon? I watched the last meeting, I seen you, you don't want this to happen either, and, but you work for TechCon, and you're, you're currently building, building for us brothers as well, commercial, commercial building, and that's all, that always takes privacy away, nine times out of 10, what you do takes privacy away from people. And, and I, and I see where you live, and honestly, I see where you're coming from, so if it's a big issue, I'll, I'll back out. And I'd love to build, and, and I think Millersburg needs more buildings, I mean, we need employees here in Millersburg as well, and there's great demand for it. So, I don't know what else to say, but I guess if you guys are okay with us that way to build, and I'm looking for a duplex now, if you can build instead of a triplex, it'd be a three-bedroom, three-bedroom, and there's three duplexes right beside me, and Tris is, so, add two more, and, and I know with the access, I'm happy totally agreement with you, we raised something up, we split the cost, no removal, and I told her we'd take pictures of everything before we start, and we'd leave it late, that's our idea, when we're done with the bill, I'd be gladly, having to split the cost, and grow on the driveway, and, and plow on snow, whatever it is, I don't think it'd be more than fair to split the cost as far as coming up the driveway, since it's, we both use it, and the neighbors back will be using it as well, so, that's all.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, you bought the property?
Mm-hmm.
And if you didn't get the special use approved, would you, could you build a couple of single homes back there, or could you?
I could, but I get more money, you know, in a single home, and, and my thing is, there, there's five lots there.
Uh-huh.
But I see in Millersburg, and I see actually where you guys live, your, your lot's split too, so, so people pull across, I mean, I don't understand anything, but, I, I could build a single home, but that's not really gonna be a difference if there's two single homes right there, or one duplex. And I, and, I mean, we built a print, we, we got a print already, so it's, I, it'd be a driveway and a garage with a balcony on top, and there'd be three bedrooms in each one, and have something going out back.
So how many, so duplex, so possibly you could have two cars that are gonna come in and out of there?
Yeah, it'd be-
Or maybe four cars are gonna come in and out of there?
Well-
And the condos, that was before, may have tons of cars coming out of there, so.
And, and we all know, if you got a duplex, or, I mean, renters, sometimes they bring in more cars, and, and you can write it on the, whatever, not one of the two cars, but they might bring three, and I was gonna have a separate pull-off part for them apart, if, if needed be. And on my contract out with the renters, I mean, if, you know, it says that you gotta have your moat, your grass moat within four or six inches, and, and no more than, so many cars, and there's a car in line, it's gotta go, I try and keep it clean though. And then the other thing would be, have an extra RV to be as well, but I don't really go in that way, we're out, simply just with houses, so people coming in and out.
Let me ask you this, so you, you rent, it's been brought up that people who rent tend to not take care of their properties, do you believe that?
You, you gotta, you can't just let the first guy-
Right, so you would be on top of that?
Yeah. And usually, it tells a lot though, I can hardly drive, I always think, but, and then the 440 Martin Street, I'm at, put a sign out there, I had 20 calls the first day of July, and, and I had an 11:50, and, and, yeah, I've paid more than that already, I mean, it's a-
Yeah, rents not cheap.
Yeah.
So I appreciate you coming to the meeting, that, that means a lot that you came here.
Oh, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Appreciate you listening, and, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Jason Biltz, in 70 Worcester Road, James, I, I am certainly not trying to limit your development by any standpoint. I am just asking that the board denies the change of zoning to special use, I don't think it's a good fit for the neighborhood. So I fully support the development of a single-family home, you're right, that's what I do for a living, is support development, as, many times, it's, sometimes it hurts, it's, it's part of the job, so I think there is sufficient space back there for a single-family home. I would think that the access would be written in a way that would support that, I, I'm not sure if the access, or an access easement would be written, if you truly look at how it was written, when it was written, what it was written for, if it would support the additional access that a triplex would bring. That would be a concern, and maybe something worth looking into, if that is still a point of contest. But, if, if this stays known as a single family, and a single-family home gets built back there, even several of them, yeah, we can't do anything to stop that, and I'm not gonna, you know, butt up against that, I mean, I can't do anything about that, and frankly, I don't have any concerns with that. The only concern I have is that this gets rezoned as special use. And if this were to get approved, or approved with amendments, or whatever, I would just request that the plan that is approved is for what he is building. If he's talking about going maybe to a duplex, that's not what the plan that was approved by zoning was showing. So I would ask that that plan is revised, and resubmitted, and re-branded through the process, because that's not what we're here to talk about. We're here to talk about the plan that was originally approved by zoning, and this is the third reading of that original plan that still shows a triplex, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Were there actual plans that were submitted?
Yeah.
Of a triplex?
The planning and zoning.
It's a triplex, not a duplex?
Yeah, triplex.
So Nate, whether it is a duplex or a triplex, either one would require a change of-
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Bobby?
Okay, so the motion is on the floor, because we have the motion on the floor to pass it, but there were options, you said pass it with group, how did you word that? I just want to make sure that we don't need to rethink the motion, strike it and start over.
Pass as presented, pass with conditions, or deny it?
Okay. So do we want to stick with the original motion to pass? Okay.
And, and if, if he is proposing to change it to a duplex?
He'd have to go back to the planning and zoning board to get the development plan approved.
So it would-
The rezoning could happen, but he couldn't, if he's gonna change from what's submitted in, in the development plan that we currently have, any deviation from that has to go back to the planning and zoning board.
But, but if it is, but if we approve it, there is no, I mean, we have his word here tonight that he's going to change it to a duplex.
Correct.
But there is nothing forcing him to do that.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and, I'm sorry, and, and if, if it is, and if we deny it, is it dead completely, or can he reapply with a different, with the-
Sure.
A device.
He could, yeah. Changes development plan, come back.
And start with planning and zoning again.
So I'm gonna ask a question, just for my own clarification too, is it James?
Yes.
Okay, so James, you presented your side of things, and you also made a comment about, you, you didn't wanna, didn't want to upset people, okay? I guess, my direct question to you is, do you want us to vote on this, or do you want to rescind your application?
Yeah, well, I look at it this way, if, if it's gonna, if, if you guys are really, really, it's the last thing you want me to do, I don't want to do it. I don't want to mad neighbors, and I don't want trouble down group, and I don't want people mad at me, I guess. I, I really like the bill, and I think it's necessary for Millersburg, but if there are, I just don't understand, if you, if you, if you take it to a single-family home, I could build two single-family homes right there, otherwise, there wouldn't be much difference.
That's what I said.
I'd like to speak on that. I, I'm simply resisting the precedence, really, it's, it's gonna be outside of your control, outside of future council's control, outside of future zoning board's control, 40, 50 years from now, when another property, adjacent to this property sells, and they also want to rezone it as special use. And now, because your property is in a special use, they're gonna want to do the same, and then the one that sells five years from there, it wants to do the same, and then the entire thing becomes special use. We are still alive, and we're still dealing with it, that's why we don't want this to happen. Nothing against development, just against-
Just the zoning change.
Zoning change.
So you can say, like, your property, that you could tear your house down, put a duplex there?
Not our property, we'll still be there. If it's down, tear it down, if they got a rezon, yeah, anybody could do, special use is so raw on what you, I mean, it's, it's the precedence, that's what we are fighting against, if you go all the way back to what we said in the zoning board meeting minutes, it should say that we were resisting the precedence of this change.
So it got changed from the time hers were built, like her duplexes?
Yeah, that was way before we had this.
And there are no other duplexes in, like, the village of Millersburg, or triplexes, or?
Oh, there's lots of them. Plenty of them, and plenty, and plenty of single-family neighborhoods, they got changed as special use and got built there. There was somebody on Matt Anthony that was very upset that a single-family neighborhood, that, yeah, so, yes, precedence been set.
So James, what do you want to do, I guess I'm asking you, we're, we're here to either vote or not vote. If, if you're saying that you, you want to do away with your application, I guess we need to hear that from you.
Yes, I, I do, I want a duplex.
I'm, I'm sorry.
A duplex, I, I like a little duplex.
He wants to try for the duplex.
Well, then, then I think our job here today is done, that I think you need to, from what I hear you saying, you need to reapply, and go through the planning and zoning commission again, and-
But I think you can still do the rezoning.
The special use though?
Go back and get a development plan.
So that he could build the duplex.
And you can make your motion to change the zoning contingent on him getting a development plan approved by the planning and zoning board.
And if he didn't do that, then he couldn't-
Then nothing happens.
Contingent on it, he would have to build a duplex.
Right.
But that would have to be in the motion.
But I, I think if he wants to build a duplex, that he should go back to build her, planning and zoning, and then, planning and zoning should come to us for a recommendation for special use, and then we vote on it, I don't think we do it.
Isn't this just amending the zoning, and has nothing to do with the building?
Yeah. Just amending the zoning.
Just because it's a special use district, the development plan's a very integral part of a special use district.
And Bob, maybe you can speak on this, but I, I would, what is the legal way to go about a change like this? I personally, just looking at the, the way that the whole process works, a change like that is a change to the development plan, which was what zoning board approved. That, this change to a duplex is a change to the development plan, which, in my opinion, needs to be reevaluated by the zoning board. And if the change of zoning is still on the table as a result of the duplex, we're gonna be here saying the same exact things, because it's the same thing as the rezoning, that's what we're fighting. And I, I know I can speak for Heidi and Neil, that also submitted to zoning board the letters of resistance, that, that was the same exact question they were saying, is resisting the rezoning to special use, that's why we are here, that's why we've been fighting.
So the question is, because he now wants to build a duplex, do you now want to send this back to planning and zoning? Or do you want to vote on amending the zoning map today? We have, everybody agreed to vote today, does that now change because of new information?
I don't want to vote, do I?
You're willing to vote? Everybody's willing to vote? Okay. So do we have a motion to pass or to deny?
Some.
Pass or deny?
Yeah.
Somebody's seconded, I'm sorry.
Hey, I gotta be honest, I would still confuse, I, I think we need to clarify a little before the motion.
The motion is to pass it or to deny it.
To pass, his request?
Huh?
Isn't it just to pass or adopt the map?
Yes, 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 to pass, yes.
So what you're saying is, we should not allow us?
No, he's making a motion to vote, he's just making a motion to, to pass it, and then people can say yes or no.
Yeah.
Okay, we can vote, that's fine.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now you can call. Okay, Vaughn?
No.
I'm sorry?
Nate, I'm sorry.
Con?
No.
Sheemaker?
No.
Pullen?
No.
Hofstadter?
No.
And Kellogg?
Aye.
Okay, the zoning map is not amended. Moving on, we have ordinance 2025-104 by title only, before I read that, can we have a motion to suspend the second and third readings, please?
Some move.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
Sheemaker?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Aye.
An ordinance to hold an advisory election on the issue of whether facilities should be allowed to be located within the village of Millersburg for marijuana cultivation, or marijuana processing, or marijuana real, retail sale, and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Sheemaker?
Aye.
Sorry, Vaughn?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution 2025-16 by title only, again, can I have a motion to suspend the second and third readings, please?
Some move.
Second.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sheemaker?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
And Kellogg?
Aye.
A supplemental appropriation resolution for the general fund, parks and income tax, and declaring an emergency, can we have a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Pullen?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Aye.
Sheemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
All right, resolution 2025-17, first reading by title only, a resolution authorizing the transfer of sums from the general fund to the street maintenance and repair fund, to the cemetery operating fund, to the police disability and pension fund, and to the sidewalk replacement fund. Are there any questions? All right. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, do we need an emergency for this? It was a little unclear to me. I'm sorry, let me get there.
No, this is just a one, this is just a, this doesn't even need three readings.
Okay, all right, good. Um, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Can we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Pullen?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
She maker?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Aye.
Okay, got through all that. Now, as you noticed, in the old unfinished business, we have A through V. We are not going through A through V tonight. Um, some of those things, we've already discussed, Dora, you already know what's going on with that. So we'll go through a few, a few of them tonight, and then we will finish the list at our next council meeting. We had discussion last week about, not last week, at the last council meeting last month, about the North Clinton, East Jackson Street right turn only, as well as the No Name, South Clay, right turn only. Do we need discussion on those? Or do we have a motion to approve both of those, or one of those?
So you're talking on Clinton, Clinton Street, North Clinton, is that right?
The east.
East.
That's what I thought.
Oh, yeah.
It's east, East Clinton, East Jackson.
Confused me. So you wanna prohibit people from going left or going straight?
That was the, yeah, that's what the request was to consider that.
Or doing restricted hours?
What are restricted hours?
Whatever you deem.
Are, are restricted hours typically, are, are you thinking like, foot, foot six, or, I, I guess I need some direction.
I would think it would be more daytime hours, um. I, morning.
What are a return on red, hour six to six?
Yeah, typically six to six.
Keep it consistent if that's the way we go.
Do, do you think it's necessary, Nate?
I've seen, I've seen both, I've seen it both ways. There's random times of day you pull up, there's no traffic, you can go wherever you want. There's other times, your four cars back, because the first car in line is turning left or going straight, and you sit there for a long time. Just depends on the volume of traffic at the time.
I personally don't, I personally don't like restricting. I like the option to be there. If people realize at certain times that it's difficult to turn a certain direction, then they should avoid that area. And that's where I, I guess I come down on not prohibiting, um, certain turns during certain hours. I really like the, the right turn on red on Clay and Jackson Street. So, that we did hear a while back.
Monroe and Jackson, Monroe, yeah, Monroe.
I really like that.
Yeah, I don't know that there's been any incidents as a result of that.
There's just so much space there to see that it's, it's very safe for a turn, yeah.
I guess, and I, I think that's, that's fine. The, the request that came in was just the council discuss it and consider it. So I can gladly report back to them that they did so and decided not to do anything.
I mean, that's, that's my opinion. I, I like options, but I don't like restrictions in those areas.
I, I guess I'm kinda leaning the same way. I mean, you look at the next one, No Name and South Clay, that one makes a lot more sense. That is a very different intersection, a much more dangerous intersection.
Yeah, he didn't think that, that's a lot going on there. I lived there, twenty seven years.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
You've got people shooting off, you've got, I mean.
You've got people trying to go straight from No Name over to South Clay.
Over to, over to that.
I, I mean, that's, that's a very, a very different intersection.
That's crazy.
And, and you get people that come out on, when they're on No Name, and not only that, when they, people that try to avoid the traffic, so they'll come down Monroe, go down No Name, you're gonna have people backed up, you can have people backed up on No Name, they're trying to turn left. And I've seen road rage, because somebody yelling, why don't you just go right? Because you can turn right, you want options? You can turn right out of there and go up to the next street, which is what I do, and then come down south, and come south.
And then come down.
Well, and, and depending on the traffic, I will admit, I have made a left turn off of No Name. But, and it, but it takes you a long time to get around that turn, and it feels like you're in that intersection forever.
Oh, yeah, you got it. And any car can come flipping up through, you can't predict how fast somebody's gonna come up.
Yep.
I've seen people, you know, practically get out on the street from No Name Street to see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In the section.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've done the trick of actually looking in the windows of the houses. To see if a car's gone, done that too. Done that too.
Look in the window, come over the window and see.
Not safe.
Right. Okay, so do we want to, um, table the East Clinton, East Jackson and not worry about that one?
Not table, just not take action.
I mean, just not, not take any action on that? Okay. Do we wanna take action on the No Name Street?
I think we should.
Okay.
Should have a motion.
That's a motion.
Is there specific hours or all times?
I think it should be all the time.
Yeah, just confuse people by giving them different times, all the time.
All the time, okay.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second. She maker?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
And Con?
Do it, I didn't, I didn't.
No.
Okay.
Okay, we are gonna skip over the South Clay Street pavement striping, because that's the state's issue, correct? And we can't do anything about that. Um. We are going to move past the smart traffic lights, because I have not heard back from him. Shoemaker discussion concerning promotion of the village. Bob, you gave us each a, a letter. Do you wanna talk about that?
Okay, well, first of all, I think what Bobby contended to establish a budget next year to have funds available, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, checked into that. Um, we don't have to make a new fund completely, we can just use the general fund. We just have to create a line item for that. Um, checked, Bob checked the legality of everything, we're good. So that could be something that we budget for, for next year.
I also wanted to add to that, I talked to Taylor Sigler, she called me, um, and she said that is technically her job. Her job is to bring, um, people into shop in the downtown, as well as bring business into Millersburg. So she would like to be part of that discussion, because her budget is supposed to be for that.
But she was always looking at retail, I'm looking at industrial.
I, that's exactly what I told her, and she said she would be more than happy to discuss industrial.
Okay.
So she wants to be part of that conversation.
All right. And I met with Arnie and Mark, and that we've come with, up with this, uh, the website operated by the Ohio Department of Development. And we were, the Amish Wedding Foods, Billy Baker bought the building. And he wanted to list it, but now he's come back already and said no. Uh, the old Fisher Big Wheel building, loaders do not know what they're gonna do with it yet. The International Packaging Flexi Company, Shasta Mast husband owns the building. He is now manufacturing refrigerator doors for like semis or.
Oh.
And there, and there's also another company in there with him manufacturing, so. We're really going to acreage. And we were talking with Arnie and Mark. You know, we could tap onto resources out County Road three forty-nine, because they, water sewer run out to the fairgrounds. Or Township Road, Hardy Township Road, three oh five, where they could bring utilities across, especially from Walmart up through there. And that would just be contacting the owners of the land and see if they would want to approve or list something like that. So that's where we're at.
Okay.
I just wanna see light manufact, good paying jobs come to town.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah.
There's a lot of main manufacturing on the west, east side of the county.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. Okay, so we will keep discussing that, uh, the council rules, we've already talked about that. Um, the new water bill system, we've.
September.
September.
That's what Mary is telling me.
Okay, so hopefully by September, we will have that going. That's great.
I think, um, I'll just add a little bit. Um, I believe that the system is built, and it's in kind of a demo mode right now. So all of our accounts, I think, have been loaded, and Mary can get in and explore the new system. And, um, then there'll be more meetings and things, trainings, but, um, I think, have you been in there? I haven't been in there, but, um, I believe that all of our accounts, our current accounts have been integrated into that. And it's kind of in a trial mode right now, kind of a testing mode, so.
Okay, awesome. Um, we've talked about the post office crosswalk. Um, let's see, what is the other thing I wanted to talk about?
Dora.
Dora, we've talked about that, mhm. The downtown sidewalk project.
We do have a kickoff meeting tomorrow with the engineer on that, uh, Quicksaw and Associates was selected. Meeting tomorrow morning, go over the project and walk it. So should have more information in the next month or so as they begin design.
Awesome. Can you please remember to tell them, we would like the trees where the lines go?
Yeah.
No. We, we talked about that multiple times. Um, okay. So that's what we're going to discuss tonight.
I can address two more if you want.
Yeah, go ahead.
The indigent burials happened on six twenty-five, just the burials, there's gonna be a formal ceremony later this fall, once the stone's in place. So I'll, I'll give everybody notice on that, but all the cremains were placed, end of June went very well.
Okay, good.
And then the street signs without the speed limit signs, I've asked again for an update on where that's at, and haven't heard anything yet.
I, I mean, this shouldn't be that difficult, should it?
No. It's what, four signs maybe?
How long ago was that all? Something a year?
Last year.
Yeah, it was last year.
Last year.
That is just unbelievable, that, I mean, you'd think that should be a very quick turnaround. Again, maybe that's just us being unrealistic expectations, but I think dragging off for nine months is, you know, it's crazy, a bit excessive.
Right. And the, um, you, the finance audit committee will be meeting on August eleventh, so we can cross that out.
I messed that up.
That's why I was.
I messed up. So, on August eleventh, before the council meeting, is when I would like to do the records commission, because it's literally just.
Oh, records commission.
Yes, I apologize.
Okay, yeah, you, you did.
I, I don't, I don't know what I was talking about. And I'm losing the fight in me, I didn't. I was wrong.
Okay, so the eleventh will be the records commission.
Yes, so that's August eleventh, if, if everybody can do that. So the finance audit committee, that meeting probably would take a little bit longer. And so what I was hoping, because that committee would, is, does, it's supposed to also include department heads. And so I was kinda hoping that we could do that one earlier in the day, because I expect that one to maybe last an hour. So, um, if we could consider maybe a three thirty, uh, meeting on the twenty eighth, that would be. I looked ahead, I can do it. Okay, okay.
Brent, how about you?
That's August twenty eighth?
Uh, July, that's July.
On a Monday.
Okay.
On a Monday. Two Mondays from now.
We're not anticipating it taking too terribly long?
I would say an hour max.
I would be very patient.
You're gonna be, okay. And it's mainly just gonna be budget items, which we'll go through really thoroughly.
Will that be okay for now, Brent?
Yes.
Okay. Bob?
One hour.
Bob, you're the other one. Is that, does that work for you?
That's fine.
Okay, all right.
Great, okay.
Okay, so that's finance.
Sorry about the confusion, everybody.
Okay, that's good, I was confused. You should've said, you weren't confused, I was. Okay, so, that's great, we got a lot. Okay, new business, the planning grant.
That was submitted, uh, not heard anything back yet.
I passed that to, I filled that out, sent it to Nate, Nate said it looked good. I sent it to Jennifer Six that we met with. She had me add one sentence, I sent it in, and, um, yeah, they've, they've got Nate's info to get back with us, so. Hydrant flushing.
So I talked to Nate about that. The plan was to start this week, but with people being off, he wasn't able to, didn't have the staff. So we're gonna try again next week. There is a bill proposed right now that we're watching, um, that would require annual flow testing of every hydrant, which is very cumbersome. I, I have no idea how that would be achieved, so hopefully it doesn't get lagged, but we are keeping an eye on it.
Okay, what about the bids for twenty twenty-six?
Okay, so I put that on there, because it was around this time last year that we started talking about it. So it's, I don't know if those are both things that we want to put out there again this year. So we wanna start working on, um, the specifics for those, and when we wanna release those to the public and get that kind of decided. Just to plan ahead a little.
Do you wanna go ahead and do that?
Yeah.
Yeah? Yeah?
Last year, there was a lot of discussion about what the flower baskets were gonna look like.
They're pretty, they're colorful.
So they, they are, they look, yeah.
They are, yeah, they're colorful.
They do, they look good.
So think about those things, and as we get, if we have any specific things like that, that anybody's, um, real interested in, then let's be sure and, and talk about that at the, at the next meeting, so that when, um, when we're preparing that to, to put out, that it's got everything that we actually want slash need.
I defer to Nate's judgment on picking flowers.
Because Nate has such good flower judgment.
I hope you all like plastic flowers.
They'll be colorful. Okay. Any visitors wish to address council?
Well, do we have any other new business?
Oh, do we have any other new business?
I had something.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I was asked by a resident, uh, if it would be possible to re-stripe, uh, Port Washington Road and Glen Drive. And you know, I drove both of them today, and it's one of those things, you drive them every day and you don't really think about it, but the center lines are terrible slash nonexistent.
Yeah, so.
On most of those.
That is part of the twenty twenty-four resurfacing, that we were waiting on the pole to be moved.
Okay.
All the striping, they wanted to wait to have all the tether painters in one time.
So that, that is happening.
That'll be included.
Okay, so that should be happening yet this year then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool, that was easy.
That was easy. You can get right back to them, that's great.
You're a constituent, very happy.
That's right, that's right.
I can't swear that Port Washington was on it, but I know Glen Drive was. I'll have to double check the twenty twenty-four plans to see.
Okay. Yeah, because Port Washington is nonexistent in a lot of the areas down there. It's almost like it was skim coated or something and covered up the, the center line for a lot of it, so, at night especially that, can be a little hard to see, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sorry about that. Any other new business?
I'll throw something out. Ralph Law contacted me or talked to me, and we are losing medical staff in this town, physicians. Wanted to know if there's any way we could get involved with the hospital or somebody for recruitment of doctors to Millersburg. Throw that out there, see if anybody has ideas.
I don't even know how we'd go about doing that. How about if I, I'll talk to the commissioners?
I have, I've been involved in a lot of physician recruitment in my past, so, be more willing to help.
Throw our own business and let us think about it.
Right. Physician recruitment, okay. All right. Now, any visitors wish to address council? All right, hearing none. I need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to a higher revised code section one twenty-one point two-two G one to consider the appointment, employment, and compensation of a public employee, and I would like to ask Pat to stay, please.
Second.
Excuse me, Pullen?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
She maker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Con? And Kellogg, thank you.
All right, thank you everyone, have a great evening.